Okay.
All right, I'll wait till Mary's suspense. All right, I'd like to welcome everyone to our organizational meeting. Thank you all for coming.
First, we're going to swear in Janet is our new mayor. The State of New York, County of Clinton, Village of Champlain. I, Janet McFet- okay. I, Janet McFetridge, do solemnly swear that I will support to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of mayor April 1st, 2019 to April 5th, 2021, according to the best of my ability.
Do I have to repeat that, or do I just say I do?
Say I do, it's fine.
Congratulations.
Okay, let's move on.
I, Nick Malinsky, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee April 1st, 2019 to April 5th, 2021, according to the best of my ability. Okay.
I, Kim Trombley, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, that I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee April 1st, 2019 to April 5th, 2021.
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations to you two.
Congratulations to Janet.
Thank you. So to the, to the audience here. I was just going to say if, if you don't want to stay for the rest of the meeting, we certainly understand. This is always a long one. But you're more than welcome to stay. So the meeting's called to order. The salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Trombley.
Here.
Trustee Malinsky. Trustee Trombley.
Here, I'm sorry.
Mayor McFetridge.
Here. All right, so this is the organizational meeting, which I believe means that I have to read a lot of information to you. Did I skip anything, or? Don't I start that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I think you all have all the paperwork for that. Yes? Bear with me. These are the mayor's appointments. The following appointments were offered by Mayor McFetridge. Thomas Bernane be and is hereby appointed village attorney for a term of one year expiring on April 6th, 2020 at the retainer set by annual budget appropriation. Mary Sousa be and is hereby appointed deputy clerk for a term of one year expiring on April 6th, 2020 at the salary set by annual budget appropriation. Michael Joliker be and is hereby appointed superintendent of public works for a term of one year expiring April 6th, 2020 at the salary set by annual budget appropriation. Michael Tetro be and is hereby appointed fire, building codes, and zoning enforcement officer for a term of one year expiring April 6th, 2020 at the salary set by annual budget appropriation. Juanita Munoz be and is hereby appointed records access manager for a term of one year expiring April 6th, 2020 at no salary. Mary Sousa be and is hereby appointed registrar of vital statistics for a term of one year expiring April 6th, 2020 at the salary set by annual budget appropriation. Peter Visconti be and is hereby appointed chairperson for the zoning board of appeals for the remainder of his five-year term expiring April 5th, 2021. Chairperson Clark Herdick has resigned from this position. Lynn Hoagel be and is hereby appointed to the zoning board of appeals for a term of five years expiring April 1st, 2024. Natasha Nevis is hereby appointed to the zoning board of appeals replacing Nikki Malinsky for the remainder of her five-year term expiring April 6th, 2020. Mark Matty is hereby appointed to the zoning board of appeals replacing Clark Herdick for the remainder of his five-year term expiring April 3rd, 2022. Do I have a motion to accept these appointments?
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Mayor's committee appointments and designations, April 1st, 2019 to April 6th, 2020. The following appointments were offered by Mayor McFetridge. Deputy Mayor, Thomas Trombley. Water and Sewer Commissioner, Thomas Trombley. Deputy Commissioner, Kim Trombley. Sidewalk Commissioner, Kim Trombley. Deputy Commissioner, Nikki Malinsky. Equipment Tool Commissioner, Amy Garrick. Deputy Commissioner, Thomas Trombley. Building Property Commissioner, Thomas Trombley. Deputy Commissioner, Amy Garrick. Parks Recreation Commissioner, Amy Garrick. Deputy Commissioner, Nikki Malinsky. Personnel Commissioner, Amy Garrick. Deputy Commissioner, Kim Trombley. Harassment Committee Member, Kim Trombley. Harassment Committee Member, Nikki Malinsky. Shared Services Commissioner, Thomas Trombley. Deputy Commissioner, Nikki Malinsky. Insurance Commissioner, Amy Garrick. Planning Board Liaison, Thomas Trombley. Zoning Board Liaison, Janet McFetridge. Champlain Fire District Liaison, Janet McFetridge. Chairperson of the Zoning Board of Appeals, Peter Visconti. Vice Chairperson of the ZBA to be determined. Chairperson of the Planning Board, Keith Ketterer. Vice Chairperson of the Planning Board, Norman Koslowski. Budget Officer, Janet McFetridge. Recreation Committee, Janet McFetridge. Do I have a motion to accept these appointments?
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
I think the undersea sidewalk commissioner is supposed to be streets and sidewalk.
Oh, yes, we did discuss that.
I, I only, I, I must have blanked out streets.
Yeah, that's true. Yes. Yes. It was streets and I requested that we add sidewalks. Because I know that Kim and I had often done those together. Right, okay, good point. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Board appointments. The following appointments were offered by the Board of Trustees. Claire Clark and Marie Dupie be and are hereby appointed inspectors of election for a term of one year expiring April 6th, 2020 at the salary set by annual budget appropriation with Marie Dupie as chairperson. Beverly Maynard be and is hereby appointed village historian for a term of one year expiring April 6th, 2020 at the salary set by annual budget appropriation. Kimberly McGoldrick be and is hereby appointed recreation director for a term of one year expiring April 6th, 2020 at the salary set by annual budget appropriation. May I have a motion to approve these appointments?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Board designations. Official newspaper, The Press Republican, Plattsburgh, New York, and The Sun Community News, Elizabethtown, New York, be and are hereby designated the official newspapers of the Village of Champlain during the year April 1st, 2019 through April 6th, 2020. May I have a motion to approve this designation?
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Village Board meeting schedule. The following dates be and are hereby designated as the official meeting nights of the Village of Champlain Board of Trustees during the year April 2nd, 2019 through April 6th, 2020, and the time being at 6:30 PM at the Village Office, 11104 Route 9, Champlain, New York. Should I read all the dates into the record? I can?
I guess so, yeah.
Okay.
Probably because they're different.
Yeah, yeah, in the discussion, we can talk about that. May 6th, 2019, June 10th, 2019, July 8th, 2019, August 12th, 2019, September 9th, 2019, October 7th, 2019, November 4th, 2019, December 9th, 2019, January 13th, 2020, February 10th, 2020, March 9th, 2020, April 6th, 2020. Further, just a minute. A copy of said resolution shall be forwarded to the news media and others having an interest in said meetings and requesting copies thereof, thereby officially notifying the public as required by law and in meeting the obligations of the Freedom of Information Act. Also, that said meeting dates be posted in one conspicuous place in the village as required by law. May I have a motion to approve this designation? And a second?
Second.
Discussion, I would just add at this point is the ones that are changed from our second Monday are the ones that fall on a holiday. So it seemed easier to come up with the calendar right now. We all know when the meetings will be. And that one, we can put right in our calendars and we know.
I figured that's why you were doing it.
Yeah.
I like it, I figured that too. I quickly go in the calendar to check it. It makes sense.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Zoning Board of Appeals meeting schedule. The second Wednesday night of each month is hereby designated as the official meeting night of the Zoning Board of Appeals during the year April 1st, 2019 through April 6th, 2020, at the time of 5:00 PM at the Village Office, 11104 Route 9, Champlain, New York. Further, a copy of said resolution be forwarded to the news media and others having an interest in said meetings and requesting copies thereof, thereby officially notifying the public as required by law and in meeting the obligations of the Freedom of Information Act. Also, that said meeting dates be posted in one conspicuous place in the village as required by law. May I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Planning Board meeting schedule. The third Wednesday of each, the third Wednesday night of each month is hereby designated as the official meeting night of the Planning Board during the year April 1st, 2019 through April 6th, 2020, at the time of 5:00 PM at the Village Office, 11104 Route 9, Champlain, New York. Further, a copy of said resolution be forwarded to the news media and others having an interest in said meetings and requesting copies thereof, thereby officially notifying the public as required by law and in meeting the obligations of the Freedom of Information Act. Also, that said meeting dates be posted in one conspicuous place in the village as required by law. May I have a motion to approve this? And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 2020 to 2021 organizational meeting. The annual organizational meeting is set for the 2020, 2021 official year and for the various appointments and committees be and is hereby scheduled for April 6th, 2020 at 6:30 PM at the Village Office, 11104 Route 9, Champlain, New York. May I have a motion to approve this?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Youth Commission. The village shall continue its participation in and with the joint projects of the Town of Champlain Youth Program and with the Clinton County Youth Bureau as a member of said countywide youth organization. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Village Policies. The Board of Trustees reviewed the following village policies. Investment Policy. Procurement Policy. Personnel Policy. Rules of Procedures for Public Meetings. Code of Ethics. Sexual Harassment Prevention Policy. May I have a motion to approve all policies as written?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Annual Resolutions. Resolution for Payment of Claims. Whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Champlain has determined to authorize payment in advance of audit of claims for public utility services, postage, freight, and express charges, and whereas all such claims shall be presented at the next regular meeting of audit, and whereas the claimant and officer incurring or approving the claim shall be jointly and severely liable for any amount disallowed by the Board of Trustees. Now therefore be it resolved, Section 1, that the Board of Trustees authorizes payment in advance of audit of claims for public utility services, postage, freight, and express charges. All such claims shall be presented at the next regular meeting for audit, and the claimant and officer incurring or approving the claims shall be jointly and severely liable for any amount disallowed by the Board of Trustees. Section 2, this resolution shall take effect immediately. Motion to approve said resolution.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution for Mileage Reimbursement. Whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Champlain has determined to pay a fixed rate for mileage as reimbursement to officers and employees of the village who use their personal automobiles while performing their official duties on behalf of the village. Now therefore be it resolved, Section 1, that the Board of Trustees shall approve reimbursement to such officers and employees at the rate of 55 cents per mile. Section 2, this resolution shall take effect immediately. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution for Official Bank Depositories. Whereas the Board of Trustees has determined that Village Law Number 4-412 (3)2 requires the designation of banks or trust companies for the deposit of all village monies. Now therefore be it resolved, Section 1, that the Board of Trustees designates the following institutions as depositories for all monies received by the village treasurer, clerk, and receiver of taxes during the year April 2nd, 2019 to April 1st, 2020. TD Bank, Shazee Branch Office. Key Bank of New York, N.A. Champlain Branch Office. Chase Manhattan Bank, New York, New York. Key Trust Bank, Albany, New York. USDA/Rural Development, Ithaca, New York. And the Champlain National Bank Champlain Branch Office. Section 2, that this resolution shall take effect immediately. Motion to approve? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Standard Workday and Report Resolutions. Be it resolved that the Village of Champlain hereby establishes the following as standard workdays for elected and appointed officials and will report the following days worked to the New York State and local employees' retirement system based on the record of activities maintained and submitted by those officials to the clerk of this body. I don't think I could read the chart, but you have it in the paper.
No, that's okay.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I think that's something that Nikki yelled out there.
Are you joining the?
Are you part of the, you're, you're in your stay already, right? Just wanted to add that's your retirement.
Yeah, you don't have to give me your number.
Okay. So it's not seven, so I go ahead with the regular meeting, correct?
Yep.
That doesn't require anything to open the regular meeting, right?
No, because we haven't got into public hearing.
Right, okay. All right. So the approval, may I have a motion for the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting? And a second?
Second.
Any discussion, any corrections? Anything that you?
I didn't find anything.
Anyone find anything? Okay, if there's nothing to be added or corrected, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Can Nikki withstand that?
She's staying, yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's right, she's in extension. Presentation of petitions, communications, and general question period for members of the community. Ms. Beverly, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, I've enjoyed, I've never been to one of your meetings, so I feel well enjoying it.
I have to make this a monthly thing.
All I can think of when you're going through all that goes, oh, it's a lot of words, but at least it's just one city or right.
Yes, yes. And I would just like to also say thank you for being our village historian.
Oh, you're welcome.
Okay, so it looks like we don't have a report from the code enforcement officer? We'll dispense with that. Report from the mayor. All right, I'll give you a few words. I won't say words of wisdom. Good evening to all of you, my fellow board members. And I'd like to thank everyone who took the time to vote. It was a sizable turnout for an uncontested election, and we are grateful for your interest and support. This change in leadership is certainly bittersweet for me, and I think my fellow board members agree. I joined this board six years ago, and I was fortunate to learn the ropes from Mayor Greg Martin, who allowed and encouraged me to learn as much as possible, as quickly as possible. I will admit that I was a little concerned when the first discussions were about ductile iron pipes and census water meters. And I doubted whether I was even capable of understanding these things. A mere thanks are not enough to express my gratitude for all that Greg has done for this village. His dedication to the job as mayor went well, well beyond the basic job description, and he can truly never be replaced. I'm very well aware that we have our challenges here in the Village of Champlain. Water main breaks, sidewalk repairs, street paving, wastewater plant upgrades. We've already begun looking for money to fund some of these concerns. We will continue to keep you informed as we move forward on these projects. I am convinced that with Mary and Juanita in the office, with Mike and the DPW crew in the garage and out on the streets, and with this great Board of Trustees that I have with me, that the Village of Champlain is in good hands. However, the true strength of our community lies in its citizens. Each and every one of you has something to contribute to the social fabric of this village. Humans need opportunities to be engaged and connected to one another. Alienation and loneliness, which are often pervasive in today's societies, can be replaced by structures of belonging. I look for opportunities to gather, to share ideas and concerns, to talk about Champlain of the past and Champlain of the future. Where are we headed? How will we get there? What role can each person play? I'm aware of our problems, but I will always look for potential and possibilities. I believe that together, we can create an even more vibrant village. I look forward to our conversations. Please contact me anytime. I thank you for your support, your patience, and your kindness as I begin serving as your mayor. It is truly an honor. Thank you. Report from the trustees. Tom?
Yes. As you well know, we have a success in Mike's protest, so that was very welcoming.
Yes.
Very welcoming, so I'm really, really glad for him. I haven't had time to, my schedule got so backed up doing that that I haven't been in here in a few days, so I want to see him and congratulate him personally.
Yeah, he was thrilled.
I'm sure he was.
I do just want to say, I know this is your report, I just want to say a sincere thank you for all that you put into that. A lot of time and a tremendous amount of knowledge, and it was, it was, made the difference.
Cool, yeah. Thank you. Glad that it did. I'm glad for him, so I gotta stop and see him. Maybe, maybe Thursday.
He's already completely booked up.
So anyways, I guess I'd like to report that. I would also like to say congratulations to you.
Thank you.
And to both of you, and welcome aboard Nikki.
Thank you.
And to reiterate, you know, your comments with Greg, I want to say congratulations to Greg on starting his next chapter. So I'm sure he's gonna watch us eventually. Or at least hear about it. But yeah, congratulations Greg. Can't wait to see him again. I understand he's doing some traveling too.
Yes, yes.
As for the water project negotiations, we're still at a stalemate waiting.
Nothing has happened.
Unless the office has heard something where contact I've had has, I've been told that it's coming.
Okay.
But I don't know what it is.
All right. Okay.
That's the status of that.
Okay.
So hopefully we can move forward with it.
Yeah, I hope so.
I hope so. I'll give it another week, I'll send out an email, but the last one I get responded to, so.
Well, can I just add? Because I went out, I jumped on her email just before we came to the meeting.
Oh, did it send something today?
No, it's the same email, but that was on Sunday, March 3rd. And that was the last email that we had. And that one said that they were given the directive from the town to prepare a final proposal outlining the EDU bond repayment scheduled for review by the village. We emailed back asking if they would send it to the team so that we could review it, or were they just going to send it to the village and?
You did not get a response to that question then?
No, I don't believe I got a response.
No, I don't believe that we got a response to that one, so.
And that was about a month ago.
Yeah, the third.
Well, no, we did get a response that he didn't feel that the, I just remembered this. He didn't feel that required coming to the team, and I responded back that I felt since that's how we formed this together, Rick, you and I, I felt the team is worthy of looking at this first. But that's what I haven't heard back from.
Right.
Okay. Kim, do you want to go ahead and do the, any more of your report? Since we just shifted over to you.
Yeah.
On side.
It's just about seven to.
Yeah, okay, all right.
I mean, this doesn't take long.
Yeah, that, that's fine. So should I go ahead and do the public hearing then? All right. So I need a motion to close the regular meeting.
So moved.
And I need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And now I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
And I need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, so this public hearing is for the 2019-2020 budget.
Am I supposed to be here for that?
Yes. No, no, it's wonderful. It's wonderful to have someone here.
Oh, I just thought, I thought maybe it was.
No.
Nope, this is, this is public.
No, 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 this is great. This is a public hearing. We're glad that we have a member of the public here. This is, this is great. Should I go ahead and summarize what? I don't know if I, there's no one.
There's that one change from the last, last time. The tentative budget was approved, but we've made that one change to the mayor's salary.
Oh, correct.
That's right. That's the only change from the tentative.
Okay. Well, I can just, from the, I can just go ahead and repeat these numbers. So when the general fund for the, the tax rate went up eight cents per thousand to 3.96, we, to, to balance the budget, we transferred, we will transfer 74,500 for general. For water, the rates stay the same. We will transfer 25,168. And for sewer, the rates stay the same, and we will transfer 72,570. And that is our new budget. Okay, so now- Okay, so now are we just passing?
Yeah.
No comment from the public? All right.
To approve the budget.
Yeah, so may I, may I have a motion to approve this budget?
I make a motion.
And a second?
Second.
Any other discussion, comments?
Uh, no, it's next one's meeting, if we would, we would appropriate any rollover funds to reserve, right?
Correct.
Yes. Yeah. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Yeah, that's your roll call.
Need a roll call.
Oh, I need a roll call, that's right.
Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky?
Aye.
Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Mayor McPetrich?
Aye. That's right, thank you. Now we need a motion to close the public hearing. So move. And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And a motion to open the regular meeting?
So move.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Okay, we're back to our regular board meeting. Uh, Kim, you want to finish up your report?
Sure, um, yeah, I didn't mean to jump in on Tom, but I have, I was really hoping we'd see something before tonight. You know, we were hoping that we'd have some kind of a.
Yeah, I checked this.
Of a response, um, so the, um, kayak launch. The application is going in this week. Um, Sierra Fleming is absolutely wonderful to work with. And I want to thank the office and Janet for the information that you guys provided. Um, all of that is being attached with the, um, application. Uh, so the. When Amy had sent me her information for the mini grant back in September, which we did not get. It didn't have the name of where she got the quote from, so I went online, I think it was the Doc Doctors.
That's right.
And I, I knew it had to be the same one, because it was identical, like I think right down to the people in the picture. So, um, I gave Sierra that information, and she, she got the quote, so. The launch system without rails and handles is four thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars before taxes. They want us to have a trap, traps counter system, which is five hundred and eighty dollars, and, and they will. The county will let us use one.
Oh.
Because what they'll, what they want is information, um, as to not just the kayak launch. But anyone that is going down there putting boats in the water, it's going to track the usage. So it's, they like numbers, so. Um, so what they'll do is they will let us use one, and then with the intention that we will get one, and that's five hundred and eighty dollars. So, what she says is if, if the above two are funded by the AARP grant. The Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative grant at Clinton County Health Department will fund the boarding handles and the grab rails. So they will pick up what's left over.
That's wonderful.
Which means that, you know, we'll have a nice kayak launch. So I asked about, okay, so what do we do? Do we go out and purchase this and wait to hear whether we get the grant, or? And she said we could do it one of two ways. Your first option would be once notified as to whether we get the ARP funding, the village can purchase the system with village monies. Which would allow for us to do like a grand opening when we have the village fest, which would be awesome. If not, um, and then replace the funds when the ARP check comes. Or you can wait until August to get the check from ARP, but the system won't be in for the grand opening. And it would be nice, because then you, the chances that we're all going to get together again to do a grand opening for that is slim, as everybody's schedules get busier. So, um, that decision is really up to us. And I don't think that she really gave me a timeline as to when we would be notified. I'm assuming it's probably closer to the end of the summer. But she just said if we could kind of decide tonight which way we would like to go, she'll put that in the grant information. So I'm thinking if we get notified that we're gonna get the money. I say let's get the system and we can have a nice celebration the day of the village fest, with, you know, there's always so many other things going on. And then just be reimbursed. We'd be out the money for a short period of time, but. And then we'd have to decide if we, if we're not going to get the money. Um, if we don't get the grant, then I don't know what the village wants to do moving forward, so.
When is the AARP grant announced? Is that in, in like August or something, or?
I think it's probably not. I think it's closer to August. And I did ask her again today, um, when we would be notified. But I don't think I got a response from her by the end of the day today, and I looked before I came tonight, so.
Sounds like a fairly sure thing, but.
Well, the AARP is highly competitive, that's a real tough one. They get like. Probably a thousand requests or more, I don't know, it's a national thing.
I guess the way I look at it is. We're trying to promote so much, and the longboats have such great success in the summer. That I think if we had the launch, we would have a lot of people using it.
Well, we would, because it's allowing people who have mobility issues to get into a boat.
Exactly.
And it's so important.
Would we have money in one of our funds?
Let's look.
Okay.
I, I would say so.
Okay, so, um.
That would be a personal creation, but.
That's what I was thinking of.
Yeah, we've got. Yeah.
Okay, so, um, what would you, how would the board want me to respond to her, that we would, um. Once notified, we would purchase the system and, and then wait to be reimbursed? Because they want to add that to the grant application.
I, I think that's fine, I don't know how the rest of you feel.
That is fine.
I would also ask her when we would be notified.
Yeah, I, um.
You know, that would be good to know, you know.
Yeah, let me just see if she's responded, um, but I did not.
But I would love it.
I, I know many, many people would love it, it's hard to get low enough into those. Yeah. Yes, yeah.
Um, I don't see a response from her.
But anyway.
Okay, so, yes, I think that's what we would be willing to do.
Okay, so we would go with the option number one, um, and plan accordingly. All right, I will respond to her tomorrow, and I'll ask her again, um, when they expect that to be awarded. It's probably somewhere in the many, 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 many sheets of information, but. Um, so then the only thing that they would want us to purchase, which they were hoping would get funded with the ARP money. Would be that counter system.
Okay.
And then Sierra said she would do the tracking for the first year, and then she would train someone to do it. It doesn't sound like it's probably very difficult, it's probably just reading something.
Yeah.
So, all right.
Oh, that's wonderful, Kim.
This is being, um, put in on Friday.
All right.
So it's due the seventeenth, but she wanted it in, because I told her, I said, I will not be available. So she goes, oh no, we're putting it in on the.
Wonderful.
So fingers crossed, toes crossed, and.
Okay, super. It's a great commitment for our opportunities for all different kinds of people.
Oh, I think so.
Yeah. Anything else?
Congratulations and welcome to the board.
Thank you. Nikki? I know, I'm throwing you on the spot here.
I said it a lot times.
Uh, how about, oh, thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
Anything at the library you want to mention?
Uh, we had our first, um, women's tea party, first annual, yes, um, we had. I think I counted over twenty that attended, so we had seven presenters.
Oh, that's. Oh, that's wonderful.
And, um, one sang a part to it, it was nice.
Um, yes.
Yes, it was really nice. The, the treats, the savory and the sweets were delicious, the tea kept coming. So it was a good time.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, and they're all excited, and they all laugh, they're very, you know, positive about it, and they're looking forward to next year. Keep that on your calendar. Um, the next activity we have is this Saturday, um, the Easter Bunny will be there, and there'll be like a photo opportunity. So bring your camera, and we'll have a backdrop set up with the bunny, um, with a few little crafts set up at the table. So something low-key, but you know, something for, for the kids in the area. May seventeenth, I think it was, remember? Check the calendar, we have a trivia night that we want to set up. Yes, the seventeenth. So people can come and, and teams, and you know, we can compete at answering trivia questions. Um, there'll be, I think, maybe a ten dollar fee, so it's a little fundraiser for the library. Um, and we also have another paternity set up, that's June seventh, I should have wrote these down.
That's okay.
So it's in mid-June, um, and that's another fundraiser, we've done two already, so this will be our third. And we usually have about twenty, twenty-five attendees. And is there anything else? A library crawl.
Oh, yeah.
It's a Saturday that we have contacted other local area libraries who are willing to help us out. It's sort of like the cheese tour, the wine tour, so you go to each library, you get a stamp on a passport, and your name gets put into a drawing after you do four of them. So it's just to visit each library, you know, and meet the board members, meet the librarians, and, you know, something different.
That's a great idea.
That's what we have so far.
Sounds busy. So out of order, because it's not really part of the mayor's report, but I have a few events that I'm just gonna throw out there. Uh, International Slow Art Days on Saturday from one to three. On Sunday is a family game afternoon at the meeting house from two to four. Um, on the thirteenth, there's music at the meeting house with Tracy Decost, Ron Gregbar, and Jeff Lenig. Uh, at six thirty, I think. And Arbor Day, which is a great village celebration, is on April twenty-seventh. So we'll have trees to plant, have some, some fun activities, so I'll just put those out for you.
Where are we, so the trees being donated, how are we collecting trees this year?
I don't have all the details on that, but we'll probably have at least four to plant, and we'll follow our revitalize, revitalization drawing. And continue around the curve. And, uh, and then we'll have some other activities. It's not totally planned yet, Tom. But it will be. So I think I said, uh, one to two thirty on that Saturday for that. May I have the report from the clerk treasurer?
Um, everyone has their spending revenue reports for March two thousand nineteen. We did have one account in the water that was in the negative, but I'll do it on the transfer. Do you have a question?
Well, I'm trying to figure the total out, is that total correct?
What's that?
On the, uh, maybe the invoices to be added? Okay.
It's because we have to make pipeline payment number two.
And is, I'm just not seeing that in here apparently?
It should be in, uh, in the regular, oh, it's, it's in, um, the sewer.
Sewer.
It's on the sewer.
Oh, okay, but it, but it ends up in the warrant.
Yes, um, I tried to see it.
That's why I couldn't make it add up?
Yeah, you want me to know when they needed to have it to me, and I said by last Wednesday, so we could add it to the abstract.
Oh, okay.
It's the second, well, we're paying it.
Doesn't take much to baffly sometimes these works.
Oh, no, that was, I was gonna, I, I was, yeah.
Yeah, that's a.
Yeah, it is correct.
That's a large word.
Yeah, I know, I was, I was trying to put it together and I couldn't.
Yeah, that's huge.
Any other questions?
So do we approve the transfers first?
No, I'm gonna do, I'll do, we have, okay, I'm gonna do, we have water and sewer billing. Um, water was in the amount of sixty-three thousand, one eighty-six, sixty-four. And our sewer was seventy-one thousand, one ninety-one, seventeen. Do you want the water again, Tom?
Please.
Sixty-three, one eighty-six, sixty-four. And with these totals, what we end up with, um, what we had discussed before, our water is probably, um, about a thousand dollars less than our budget. But our sewer is gonna end up about sixteen thousand, in which we already knew because of the border.
Right.
So. And we did adjust it going forward next year. Okay, and now we have two transfers. Um, before we approve the warrant. One transfer is to G fourteen forty point one Engineering, um, for a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Which will come out of G eight ninety-eight, the reserve fund, for a hundred and fifteen dollars, a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Um, do we want to do these together?
Whatever you think, we can do them together if that's.
And, um, the second one is to F eighty-three ten point four Water Administration, five thousand dollars. From F eighty-three eighty-nine point four Water Expense, other five thousand dollars. This is, pays our electricity, our water testing, um, we've had to do two, um, wet testing. And, um, I transferred enough money if we had to do it again, um, but Woody believes we might be done doing the wet testing, which is twenty-one hundred dollars.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the, uh, transfers as presented?
Is there a second? Any other discussion? Does this have to be a roll call?
Yes, trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky?
Aye.
Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Mayor? McPetrich? I have to look, it's like, I'm sorry, you know, I just kind of roll it off here.
Okay, so now the presentation, the warrant and the payment.
Yep. Okay, so the warrant, we have additional invoices of five thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars and sixty-two cents. For a total warrant of a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars and eighty-one cents.
Make a motion to approve the warrant?
And is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? No other questions or comments? All right, and that's also a roll call?
Yep. Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky?
Aye.
Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Mayor McPetrich?
Aye. No report from the superintendent? Did he leave any thing?
No, he's, no, he's, no, he didn't leave anything.
I don't know if it's appropriate, but I'd just like to publicly express my condolences to the, to the family, the passing of his father-in-law. He's, he's had to, he's had to take a lot of time for that, and well-deserved time for that. So we wish them all well, and we send our condolences. Um, under correspondence? Is that correct?
Yep, correspondence from Clinton County Highway Department regarding striping. Correspondence from Stewarts regarding our holiday match grant, and the correspondence. Correspondence from Stewards regarding our holiday match grant, and the correspondence from Troy and Banks regarding utility bill audit.
Um, I can add on, I can, I can add on this last one, but this is only that audit, that Troy and Banks audit that has to do with the, um, LED lights and that, that program. Um, that's only one of our accounts that they did so far, so we did get a little bit back from that audit. And, uh, we'll see what happens on the other accounts.
Mm-hmm. Will something happen?
Yes, a little bit helps. Under new business, wastewater credit, oh, here on.
Um, Mike said he was actually closed, and just happened to come back to his business and found that.
Mike explained it last meeting, if I remember right.
I thought, yes, he did, yeah, yeah.
Yes, he did, yeah.
Um, you know, so based off. Off of that, even promotion to, uh.
Yeah.
Do you care of this?
So, yeah, is there a motion to, uh?
Yeah, I make a motion to, uh, approve the sewer credit for a hundred and three thousand gallons. Uh, for a total of seven hundred fifty-one dollars and ninety cents, and this is based off meeting the criteria of our policy.
Is there a second for this motion?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. The bridge repainting, we did get word that the bridge will be repainted in the second week of June, uh, which is great news. Um, because that allows the parade to go across the bridge. And, uh, school, the school buses and all the other needs for the bridge will be delayed until middle of June. We don't have to worry about rerouting the parade, so that's good news. And that's all I can tell you about that at this point.
Do you know if it'll be closed both lanes?
Yes, it's going to be totally shut down for about a month.
Okay.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Wow.
You three are going to be stuck on the other side of the village from me.
Well, I'm thinking of my, I'm thinking of, I'm thinking of the school bus, it's going to.
Going to have to. Well, at least it's later in the school year, I was worried about last week in May, at least it's a little bit later.
Yeah.
You still have a, a week or two left, though, of school.
Yeah, two, yeah, twenty-six.
It's still going to be really inconvenient, yeah.
I, I work both sides of the river, so it's going, it's going to impact several buses, yeah.
It is. Yeah, yeah.
I'll mention it to see, you know, if they're aware.
Yeah. Yeah, could you please share that?
I will, because I don't know if the county's notified them or not.
I don't know, we, Greg and I talked about that today, and he was not sure that they had been, the school had been notified.
So mid-June, or do you have any exact?
Mid, second week of June.
The second week's on it, yeah?
That's all I know right now. Um, us, Carl Weiss should be getting in touch with a specific date.
Okay.
Is there any other new business that anywhere else has? Alright, so old business, uh, the blowers at the wastewater treatment plant, um, one has been installed. And the other one is going to be installed later this week, um, I did not ask Mike when, it, maybe Wednesday or Thursday. But one has been installed, and as far as I know, it's working well.
Oh, installed and operating.
Installed and operating.
Okay.
Oh, wow.
The idea was that they wanted to install one and make sure that it operated well for a week, before the other one went in.
Before it go off, yeah.
And it's, from what I've heard, it's, it's working well.
I've been down there once, but they were just beginning the installation, I was there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's pretty exciting to see progress, we've been talking about blowers for a long time.
Yeah.
Yes.
So this is good, yeah. Um, the contamination at the village office, um, the DEC man Russ, he stopped by last week. He's contacting, uh, Steve Phelps, the company that's doing the remediation, and, um, they will be getting back to us. So, nothing new right now, but we should be hearing something soon. Um, we discussed the water, the water project negotiations, I guess.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah.
So, it's at a standstill, really, right now.
Yeah, they've.
Yeah, we're waiting to hear from them.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, you know, it's really in their ballpark right now.
It seems like it.
Right.
Okay. For the LED streetlight conversion, um, we did send a letter to NISIG requesting the buyout cost for the remaining, um, life of the lights. And, um, I don't think we've heard anything back, have we, Mary?
No, I haven't.
Alright, but that's one of the steps that we have to take, and we already discussed the letter from Troy and Banks, that they have the audit from one of our accounts. And that's all I have for old business. Anyone have anything else?
I think this is the fastest organization we've ever had.
I'll probably read fast.
Yeah, you did very well.
Good job. It was understandable, I hope, it was.
Well, you did very understanding, you did a great job, great job.
Well, thank, yeah, I just want to publicly thank all of you, and, uh, I really appreciate the support, and I'm going to be needing guidance from everybody, but that's, but that's okay.
We do for each other.
Yes, yes, it's a great supportive group of people. So is there a motion to adjourn?
Some more.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.
Missed out.
I think that's the quickest one.
Yeah, it is.
Where's Mike on the email?